So Becca, can you guess where I am?
Did I hear that you're gonna be in the sandbox today?
Why is this called the sandbox?
Because we're all gonna play well together in the sandbox.
I love this. Okay, and for commissioners and colleagues, explain where I am.
So you are in a shared office space in Sacramento, across the street from the Capitol, that's shared by a bunch of early childhood advocacy organizations, including First 5 LA.
And I got the place to myself. I'm feeling very, I'm feeling very COVID safe.
Nice, even better. It's a nice space, huh?
It is a nice space, and I love the fact that there are photographs of little children everywhere.
Yeah.
I thought that was appropriate. This little boy over my shoulder is just too cute for words.
That's really cute.
I'm gonna open a window, actually, excuse me. Hello, Commissioner Segala, welcome. Commissioner Hager, Taylor. I saw Commissioner Tilton, I believe. Now she disappeared. Hopefully she, oh, there she is. Yep, thank you. Heidi. Welcome, Commissioner Abdo. Hello, Judy.
Hi there.
I see our finance director looking ready. Looking good, Raul. Had to dust off the jacket.
I actually found $20 in my jacket, so I was happy to put it on. Disappointed to find out it doesn't really fit anymore, but.
Hi there, everybody. It's Sheila.
Hi Sheila. Hi Yvette, welcome.
It's 1:30. Do we, do we look like we have a quorum presence? You tell me since I'm on the phone.
Yes, we do have quorum presence.
All right then, let us begin the meeting amazingly on time. What do you say? So this meeting is hereby called to order. Ms. Voe, would you please call the roll?
I will do that. Judy, I know.
Here.
Barbara Ferrer. Astrid Hager. Yvette Martinez.
Here.
Frank Ramos.
Here.
Carol Segala.
Here.
Ramalis Taylor.
Here.
Keisha Woods. Robert Byrd. Carla Plitez Howell. Jaclyn Murkowski. Deanne Tilton. And Sheila Kiel.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Okay, would you read the ground rules for the meeting?
Thank you, I will do that. Good afternoon, members of the board and public. Before we begin today's meeting, as I usually do, I will be going over some important updated information. As you are aware, under AB351, members of the First 5 LA Board of Commissioners or staff may continue to participate in meetings via teleconference during declared emergencies through January 1st, 2024. And in the interest of maintaining appropriate social distancing, members of the public may observe this telephonically or otherwise electronically as posted on our website and this agenda. Now regarding public comments, there are two ways to submit public comments, and the first way is written public comments via email, sent in advance of the meeting before 1:30 PM the day of the meeting, and that would be sent directly to me at LVO@first5la.org for them to be read aloud during the meeting. And as a reminder, public comments emailed should indicate the item number the comment corresponds with. And any comments received after 1:30 PM will become a part of public records. Now during the meeting, public members can also use the Q&amp;A chat function to express an interest in speaking to an item. It is important that these requests to speak be submitted via the Q&amp;A chat box before the item being commented on is presented. And when submitting requests to speak via the Q&amp;A chat box, public members are being asked to only provide his or her name and the item number the comment corresponds with. All public comments received during the meeting via the Q&amp;A chat will be addressed in order they are received. And when public members do hear their names being called, they will be given the ability to speak during the meeting. Now, if we don't hear the public member begin to speak and with their comment, we will call their name one more time before moving on to the next public comment. And just a reminder, two minutes will be allotted for each comment, and once two minutes have passed for each comment, we will move on to the next public comment. And finally, before we do begin today's meeting, a reminder of the following. To minimize background disruptions, all board members and staff should place their lines on mute until called upon to speak. And to minimize multiple people speaking at the same time and to ensure for coherent dialogue, board members can use the hand raise or chat box function to express an interest in speaking, or you can also text the supervisor directly to express your interest in speaking. I would then coordinate with the supervisor, your name will be called in the order received. And with the exception of adjournment, which will be called by the chair, a formal roll call will be done for all action items. And a reminder to all board members to ensure you're taking yourselves off mute prior to roll call. And if any technical assistance is required during the meeting, you can contact me directly at 213-276-9389, and I will connect you to IT. And with that, I'm gonna hand this meeting back to our honorable chair.
Thank you very much. We then will move to our next set of items, which is our consent agenda. Do any of my commissioners want to remove anything from consent before we take public comment on consent and a vote?
I don't see any hands up.
All right, then, is there any public comment on the consent agenda?
There are no public comments on the consent agenda.
All right, does anyone wish to move adoption of the consent agenda? Somebody should.
I will. Dr. Hager, Dr. Hager does.
All right, Astrid moves, and?
I'll second it. This is Judy.
Okay. Seconded by Ms. Abdo. Let's have a roll call on the consent agenda.
Judy Abdo.
Yes.
Astrid Hager.
Yes.
Yvette Martinez.
Yes.
Frank Ramos.
Yes.
Carol Segala.
Yes.
Ramalis Taylor.
Yes.
Keisha Woods.
Yes.
And Sheila Kiel.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
All right, thank you. So the consent agenda is adopted. We'll move to the next item, which is remarks by, thank you, Linda, your honorable chair. We'll see, there's always some question about this honorable stuff, isn't there? I was thinking today about our, sort of the population that really drives the mission for First 5, and that is our, our children between the ages of zero, which would be just less than one, and five. And I was thinking today about the fact that they're over, looking at all of the things happening kind of in the world and the things that get our attention, little, very little attention is paid to this age group as a separate age group. They're part of a family, perhaps fleeing war. They're part of a family, perhaps breaking up. They are not yet generally in a place where there are other eyes on them aside from their family, because as we've tried to do with mandatory reporting, once kids go to school, there are more eyes on them. And so we have devoted much of our consideration really to protection of these children, primarily, I think, in First 5 through prevention. That is, hopefully, we protect them from evil by preventing evil, especially abuse. But also education to pregnant parents-to-be about the effects, as Astrid has reminded us, of alcohol consumption, certainly drug consumption, ways that we can protect them in these early years. And also, attention to their development, education, enhancement of learning, and preparation for separating from the family and going to school. So to me, that makes our mission ever more important because we are completely focused on this population. And I think that the importance really of carrying through so much of what we are talking about every month, so much of what the budget is for, so much of our long-term financial planning, but also the programmatic ways that we approach in terms of organizing a First 5, which Kim has talked to us about quite a bit in the administration. I think it, it really underscores the importance of our long-term planning and frankly, our long-term survival. And the, the real devotion and talent and use of this commission to make certain that we keep on keeping on. So I, you know, it's not as though I have a great, you know, strong point, but only that I was thinking about how few eyes there are on this population at the moment and how much that really underscores, you know, our work. I really want to thank the staff for all of the work that they're putting in through two years of very unusual working conditions and continue to put in. It's been an amazing journey so far and one that we are still on the road for and continue with you. And to Kim and John, just all of the work you've put in so far. This is not any kind of goodbye, but just my thinking about how a population that isn't even aware of who is trying to look out for them needs us. So that's really all my thoughts here about today, and therefore I will turn to Kim to elucidate her thoughts for the day.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think your comments are really a helpful grounding for the focus of our time together today. You talk about how, how few eyes there are on young, young children and how little focus and attention to children prenatal to five as a special population, how that continues to be a real, real challenge. And I think that that is true, and I'm really proud to be a part of an organization led by a board that has all eyes squarely on children prenatal to five as a special population. And to be in a position within First 5 LA to leverage our human and financial resources in a manner that is endeavoring to drive change alongside so many partners at a scale worthy of our children and worthy of our families and communities. I talk with the First 5 LA team a lot about gratitude and how appreciative I am. And indeed, we all are to be a part of an organization that has a, a bold vision that, that sets ambitious goals for ourselves, that doesn't shy away from complexity and messiness and has embraced an approach to change through systems, family and child-serving systems, that are endeavoring to make sure that those systems intended to serve children and families actually are serving children and families. So, you know, our conversation today, I know, is about numbers, but we're going to endeavor in the presentation to, to put more of a human face and a family face and a community face on those budget numbers. I said in my note to the board, as part of my ED report out, you know, budgets are a reflection of values, and, and I, I think this budget speaks to our commitment to bold goals, our willingness to lean into some hard systemic issues and to leverage the precious resources we have as strategically as possible. So I, I hope the board sees that in, in our conversation. I hope they see, that you all see how the team really is trying to more, much more intentionally the past couple of years. And maybe it's a product and part of COVID. I know it's in part a product of our staff-led diversity, equity, and inclusion governance board work. But I see the team and it, in how it shows up within the organization, how we show up alongside one another, how we show up in community, being really quite intentional about how we are, as we say, living, living into and leaning into our values. And I hope that the board sees that, and priority nature of this population deserves us to give them their very best. And I think what the board will hear today with the budget is some very thoughtful consideration by the team in terms of where we have an opportunity to make a difference and really accelerate the kind of changes that we, we know children, families, and communities so richly deserve. We're also gonna spend time talking about another piece of what the supervisor just spoke to, which is kind of a longer-term, multi-year financial planning approach. And we began a conversation with the Budget and Finance and Executive Committees last week that we wanna both report back on and, and share some evolving thinking about how, what, some of the issues that the, the staff team is wrestling with. So we wanna kind of bring you into some of the big overarching questions that, that we are looking at relative to approaching the timing of aligning our, our revenues and expenditures over a period of time, as well as questions about how, how we use our fund balance and some of the different options associated with that. This is a really important part of our, our financial stewardship responsibility and ensuring that, as Sheila just said, that we're, we're able long-term to keep on keeping on. So we wanna share with you some of the principles, as we did with the, the committee last week, some of the principles that are guiding our thinking, share with you some of the, the trade-offs and considerations about different scenarios for aligning expenditures and revenues, and lift up some important alternative uses for the fund balance that we wanna get the board feedback on. Really are eager to hear the board engage and to get feedback. Your feedback and comments will be really helpful to us over the course of the summer to inform further good thinking and strategic thinking and come back to you in the fall with some, some specific proposals and recommendations. So thank you ahead of time for your, your thoughtfulness and your, your comments. I wanna close with some really important and affirming news that was shared yesterday by Deborah Coleman, who is the Director of the LA County Office for the Advancement of Early Care and Education, OACE. She's also importantly, an alum of First 5 LA. But she shared that the county Early Childhood Education COVID-19 Response Team had been selected for a 2022 Innovative Practice Silver Award by the National Association of County and City Health Officials, or NACO. This is, as I like to say, a big ding-dang deal and something we are super excited about. It's an award that focuses on practices that were developed in response to COVID that were exacerbated and magnified by the inequities due to COVID and which demonstrated effective collaboration, adaptability, partnership, quality improvement, and innovation. First 5 LA has been a very proud member of that team. I wanna particularly call out Becca Patton, who's our ECE team lead, but along with Jamie Kalinek, Marcy Banuelos, Marcy Manker, and really the entire ECE team that in one way, shape, or form helped pitch in to participate and contribute. Super proud to have been a part of it, delighted that the county's efforts that so exemplify the kind of county-wide collaboration that is critical to helping systems work for children and families has been recognized by this national award. So on that positive congratulatory note to our response team members and colleagues, back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any commissioners wish to make any comments about my comments or Kim's?
I don't see any hands.
I'm sorry.
I, I don't see any hands up, supervisor.
All right, and are there any public comments about my comments or Kim's?
There are no public comments on your comments or Kim's comments.
All right, then, let us move to in our next item, which is an information item on the 2223 budget and the long-term financial plan. I believe that Kim will kick it off, and several members of our staff will be presenting, most of whom I think you know and have presented to us before, but we have one new presenter whom I want to thank for joining the team, and that's Zuli Hareji, whose name I may have butchered, I hope not too much, who is a senior program officer for our health systems. And we welcome you to the presentation team, and let me turn this over to Kim to kick off and hand over. How's that?
Perfect, to Raul. Off you go, Raul.
Thank you, Kim, and thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, commissioners. As our chair stated, we are here before you with the proposed fiscal year 2223 budget and an update to our long-term financial plan that takes us through '27, '28. I wanna reflect back on some of the opening remarks from our executive director, Kim Belshay, and that the team and the way that we work together in a very collaborative way was extremely intentionally. We really, there was a very, across the organization, a very well-formed collaboration. Most of the resources is anchored on a work planning process that we took on internally, where we really looked at the work and we really focused on prioritization, focus, and what we are going to hold ourselves accountable for fiscal year 2223. This overall budget for fiscal year 2223 really reflects a lot of great thinking and, in addition, great opportunities. You'll see that the overall budget is being offset by over $5 million of non-First 5, non-prop 10 revenues. This budget reflects different reductions across the organization, which my colleagues later on in today's presentation will be highlighting around how we're looking at work, how we're creating different partnerships, and how we're taking advantage of our relationships with like departments like Department of Health. So this budget is a reflection of that collaboration. In addition, this budget also reflects resources that are well beneath or well under our established spending cap. So I'm excited as the Director of Finance to announce that, and with the good thinking of my colleagues, I look forward to passing it on to Daisy, where she will be providing us an overview of the overall budget. And then we'll be passing it along with our staff across the organization to highlight and highlight some of the work and to, and to just reflect some of the reductions that we're taking advantage of and some of the work that we're focusing on. In addition, before I pass it to Daisy, I want to share with you that this budget was shared with the Budget and Finance and Executive Committee on May 4th, and we did get endorsement to move forward. I really want to acknowledge our Chair, Commissioner Taylor, on his leadership of our committee and his engagement, and also all of the committee members that attended that meeting and their engagement on our proposed budget. With that said, I will now pass it to Daisy to give us an overall overview of the budget and move on from there. Daisy?
Thank you, Raul, and good afternoon, commissioners, staff, and guests. Today, we are going to share an overview of the fiscal year 2223 budget with a particular focus on some of our core programmatic activities, as well as an overview of our operating budget estimates and the impact of these estimates to the administrative costs before we shift to a discussion of updates to our long-term financial plan and conclude with the next steps in this process. So we begin with some general highlights. The resources included in the proposed budget maintain a continued eye toward long-term sustainability. At this time, as Raul noted, we are anticipating over $5 million in restricted non-First 5 LA funding to offset expenditures. Resources also reflect the organization's evolving needs as we continue to work through a global pandemic and ensure that activities that have been completed or that have completed their objectives are appropriately ramped down and/or closed out consistent with their contract terms and in alignment with our long-term sustainability efforts. And finally, the resources proposed in the budget demonstrate that we are being very intentional and disciplined in anchoring our investments on the work priorities and fiscal realities aligned with the strategic plan. So there were no changes to the budget framework compared to prior year. We are organizing the budget, the program budgets, beginning with the resources devoted to the strategic plan activities, followed by legacy investments, emerging opportunity funds, and operating costs captured as individual cost categories. So today's presentation will review highlights of each of these components with a focus on strategic plan programmatic costs for fiscal year 2223. So as you can see illustrated in this table, the proposed fiscal year 2223 budget represents an overall decrease in anticipated spending for the fiscal year of roughly $4.4 million or 4% when compared to the revised 2122 budget. This is driven by a net decrease in program spending of roughly $4.7 million and by an increase of approximately $280,000 in support of our operating costs, which we, we will review a little later in today's presentation. As has been the ongoing practice, legacy initiatives continue to ramp down and sunset according to plan with only one legacy investment remaining little by little for fiscal year 2223. And this investment is anticipated to fully exhaust its allocation by 2024. Resources in support of emerging opportunities for fiscal year 2223 is $150,000. The decrease in this component compared to prior years is based on our experiences. We have found that we have been able to be responsive to emerging needs within our existing budgets. The total proposed cost estimates result in a more streamlined budget, minimizing costs and maximizing outcomes as we continue to align our programmatic costs to the fiscal realities of declining revenues. So we will revisit the long-term implications of declining revenues and fund balance later in this presentation when we discuss changes to the long-term financial plan. Now, we're gonna take a look at the proposed resources for fiscal year 2223. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our Executive Vice President and Head of the Center of Child and Family and Head of the Center of Child and Family Impact, John Wagner, who will kick off the programmatic highlights. John?
Thank you, Daisy, and good afternoon, Commissioners. My remarks will focus on a few center-wide aspects of the annual budget being brought forward for your consideration, as Daisy mentioned, as well as provide an update on the component of the budget under the purview of the center support team. Then I'll turn it over to each of the CCFI or Center for Child and Family Impact Directors to get into high-level details of their respective budgets. So on this slide, you'll see the overall budget for the center at a total of 71.8 million, which represents a 7.15% decrease from the May revised budget for fiscal year 2122. This year, we're proposing reductions in each of the individual team budgets, which each director will explain in greater detail. But in addition to their reductions to better align our expenditures to revenues, there is important and exciting work underway in each of our teams that I'll briefly highlight. Underscoring the critical role we continue to play as a systems change leader and system thought partner. First, for the family supports team, which has the largest portion of the center budget, including funding for Welcome Baby Select Home Visiting, the single, which is the single largest investment for First Five L.A. This investment alone represents over half or 53% of the center's budget. Deanna will get more into the reductions in budget items, but this budget funds important work going forward to support building out the infrastructure of voluntary home visiting services in partnership with the County Department of Public Health. This work goes back many years and including to the board motion authored by our Chair several years ago, and that work continues today. This past year, we've achieved important work on governance and fiscal mapping, which will continue into the next fiscal year. An example of the work done this year is in partnership with our stakeholders and a national consultant, we've identified opportunities for sustained funding beyond First Five L.A.'s resources. In the year ahead, we will need to explore those options to determine which are most feasible and identify considerations for implementation. The topic of sustainability for our home visiting work is one that will be coming back to the board for a presentation later this year. Second, in the communities team, this team budget is also being reduced overall, which Lee will get into. But in the year ahead, we will continue to build a strong network across our regional network grantees or RNGs, not only on sustainability, but building off last year's Best Start Learning Series that was brought forward to the board, continuing to land on and focus community-identified priorities that are aligned to and can be more intentionally integrated into our work within the center. Third, our early care and education, or E C E, budget further aligns our investment in kindergarten readiness to our Best Start geographies, seeing current partnerships through on our original commitments with the final contract with Long Beach going into fiscal year 2324. In the year ahead, we continue to work to support the county system of E C E providers and partners facing a very dynamic environment and further development of our home-based childcare strategy, informed by our landscape analysis of home-based care and other efforts. And from a budgetary perspective, and related to the point Raul made in the beginning of this presentation, I'd also point out that the E C E team continues to offset half of our team budget with First Five California funding for quality work. Fourth, on the health systems team, we see a slight decrease in our budget with the ending of the first connections work related to early identification and intervention, or E I I. First Connections not only informs our ongoing E I I work through our current approach and Help Me Grow. Help Me Grow continues to be the largest investment for the health systems team and will continue in the year ahead, as Zuli will get into further on behalf of Tara. We're also looking at other emerging opportunities to advance E I I, including health plan reprocurement and state health reform efforts, which provide exciting opportunities. And finally, the center support team, part of the budget. The center support team supports partnerships across funders with the county and supports our work on sustainability, which is owned broadly by the organization. The proposed center support team budget is $600,000, which is $95,000 less than the previous fiscal year. The main reduction is in our partnership with funders on the Bold Vision Initiative, which is furthering efforts to bring authentic community voice into planning and budgeting around four target areas, including education. Our original investment ensured a focus on issues prenatal to five, and now as that effort moves forward to implementation, that focus is embedded in that work. For county partnerships, we have a continued focus on the county's work on economic security, as well as a focus on prevention. As you know, through the Anti-Racism and Diversity Initiative within the county's CEO's office, there is an effort underway to examine the establishment of a new county office of prevention. And First Five L.A. continues to be at that table, as well as other work groups focused on key areas related to prevention, like the county's implementation of the Federal Families First Prevention Services Act, which is attempting to move the child welfare services system into one with a greater emphasis on prevention and child well-being. So I'll stop there and turn this over to Deanna Karuaga to walk us through the highlights of the family supports team budget.
Thank you, John. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So the family support team budget is a total of 38.2 million, with a decrease of 5.2% compared to the prior year. The two primary drivers for the reduction includes the sunsetting of the partnership with Mama's Neighborhood, which provided technical assistance to embed the core principles and strategies of the family strengthening framework into their workforce development efforts. The other driver of the reduction is the implementation of a sustainability strategy. And specifically, the strategy affects five select home visiting grantees, which had a combined total of only six active home visitors. So we are working with the Department of Public Health with the goal of transitioning the home visitors and families being served to other funding streams within the same agency or at minimum within the network, and will sunset the five grants by December 2022. And in light of declining revenues, we continue to be actively engaged in developing short and longer-term sustainability strategies. So I wanted to highlight some key efforts for the upcoming fiscal year. In partnership with the Department of Public Health, the family supports team continues to lead home visiting system building coordination efforts to support significant systems change and to strengthen cross-sector collaboration. So an example of these coordination efforts is the development of a home visiting shared leadership and governance structure known as the Collaborative Leadership Council, or CLC, to be launched in the upcoming fiscal year. And the goal of the CLC is to perform ongoing monitoring, adjustment, coordination, and advocacy at a systems level and to deepen the connection between home visiting and other prevention and family strengthening work underway in the county. We also continue to support critical home visiting infrastructure, which includes the oversight entity led by Los Angeles Best Babies Network, the Stronger Families Database, which is used across multiple home visiting models and funding streams, and the Home Visitation Consortium, which brings together over 60 organizations to strengthen and advocate for high-quality home visiting services in the county. We also continue to lead integration efforts to improve referral pathways. So the extension of the First Five California Home Visiting Coordination Project allows us to better pilot and test bi-directional referral pathways between home visiting and the Help Me Grow central access point, and the learnings will help inform system-wide efforts and improve referral pathways across the county. And finally, we continue supporting the Welcome Baby Virtual Implementation Outcome Study. The study is focused on the implementation of virtual visits, for which there is little data at the local or national home visiting field. And data from the study will help us not only understand the role and impact of virtual visits, but are also of interest to potential funders, such as managed care organizations, which are a part of the sustainability strategies we continue to explore. And our other related efforts include building the necessary infrastructure and the mechanisms needed to participate in data sharing, reporting, and reimbursement processes. And again, we will return later this year with a deeper dive into the sustainability and system building efforts. With that, I will pass it to Lee from Communities.
Right. Thank you, Deanna, and thanks, John, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Before we talk about the numbers, I'd like to take a moment to review the overall role of the community, of communities and the priorities for next year, FY 2223. On the whole, the Communities team is focused on partnering with others to lead and fund systems change activities that promote parent and community engagement, all to advance efforts that results that result in families having the access to resources, opportunities, and relationships needed to optimize their child's development across the 14 Best Start geographies and five regions. The goal is to catalyze, strengthen, elevate, and scale empowering and innovative approaches generated by communities that improve the lives of children prenatal to age five, their families, and communities. We're leveraging our Best Start networks as platforms for community-based and county-level systems change. Now for FY 2223, we have three priority areas. And you can see the related projects to each of the priority areas in the materials for today's board meeting, Attachment C, within Item 5, the FY 2223 draft budget. The first priority area is strengthening the regional networks. This is focusing on strengthening those Best Start networks, the infrastructure, and integrating the efforts between local and county-wide efforts by connecting these regional network grantees, our RNGs, with county partners. The second priority area is building the prenatal-to-age-five movement. This is about uplifting community voices and experiences to mobilize various regional networks around prenatal-to-age-five priorities and connecting those priorities to First Five L.A. priorities. And then our last priority area is the Best Start learning. This is about supporting and furthering our deepening and our understanding of the impact of this Best Start effort within each region, across the regions, and within L.A. County. And we do this by learning together with our grantees, partners, and communities, and establishing proof of concept to inform county-wide improved systems improvement strategies. So now let's look at these numbers. For FY 2223, our budget is projected at $16 million, and that represents an 8% decrease or $1.4 million from last year's budget. And the main hi, the main highlights to note here are a 3% reduction for the regional network grantees, and also I should note there are a couple of projects that are sunsetting also. And also that we are adding $225,000 for a new, oh, can I back up one second? That 3% reduction for the regional network grantees represents $447,000. And then we're adding the $225,000 for the new activi, activating network partners efforts. This is about activating partners in the regions that are aligned in values and mission around achieving results for young children, integrating efforts, aligning actors within the region. So we have a couple of examples. This includes work with and strategic funding to Antelope Valley Resource Infusion, the Southeast L.A. Collaborative, and the Long Beach Mayor's Fund, Mayor Garcia's Cradle II Career Pipeline Effort. We have a stake and a role to ensure efforts like these are inclusive of the people in the Best Start geographies who are experiencing inequities and support their coming up with results with a P to five prenatal-to-age-five or young child orientation. Thank you, and I think I'm turning it over to Becca.
You sure are. Thanks, Lee. Hello, everyone. I'll take a moment to go through sort of the E C budget and then happy to answer any questions at the conclusion of this presentation. So the proposed E C budget for next year is 10.9 million, so it represents a 14 and a half percent decrease from last year's budget. And as John said, half of the proposed budget is funded from external sources. Those external funding is from both Laco and First Five California to support our Q S L A system. So as Commissioners know, the E C budget has really evolved over the past few years. And part of this is due to how the team is really starting to think about both our impact and our fiscal imperative. So we've started to shift the, sort of how we're thinking about our work and how we approach the work. So we're no longer sort of thinking about large-scale program design and implementation, but rather we're looking for opportunities for discrete, time-limited, and resource-restricted investments that can really drive impact and respond to the current context of the E C system. So this new approach kind of centers us as an equal-doer of the work alongside our partners, rather than just a funder or contract manager of the work. Two examples of this shift in our proposed budget include the small investment next year for COVID response, which we are all crossing our fingers we will not need to use, and the other small investment to support implementation of universal preschool. As we continue to think about both our impact and our fiscal reality, we've also made choices about how we think about the sustainability of our investments. So another example of this is with our dual-language learner work, which has previously been funded by First Five California. We were able to take that work and embed almost all of it within the Q S L A and their existing funding streams. So we are proposing a small, one-time investment of our own funding for next year, but that allows the work to continue past our funding and to ensure that the impact of the D L L work is sustainable. And then finally, this shift has also impacted how we're thinking about our kindergarten readiness assessment strategy. So as the Commission knows, we've been refining this strategy for the past year or so. And as we think about the carry strategy and our fiscal imperative, the E C team is recommending we divest from K R A and divert those resources to more pressing needs that achieve greater outcomes. So looking at the rest of the E C team budget, the largest expenditure in next year continues to be the support of Quality Start L.A. So this support is co-funded by Laco and us with support from First Five California. And next year's funding includes expansion to more home-based childcare providers, infrastructure support for both the data system and facilitation of the governance board, and finally, the small investment in the dual-language learner work, as I previously noted. The E C budget also includes an increase in our home-based childcare strategy. I'm happy to report the E C team is now working closely with the Communities team to co-lead and design this strategy. This next fiscal year, the landscape analysis will conclude and will host sense-making sessions and solicit input as we co-design system change strategies and approaches to support home-based childcare providers. This work, of course, is going to be done in partnership with both our provider advisory group and our external partners. So I'm now going to hand it over to my dear colleague, Zuli. She's going to overview the health systems budget, and as I said, I look forward to answering any questions at the end of the presentation. So, Zuli, all yours.
Thank you, Becca. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Zuli Haudig, Senior Program Officer of Health Systems, stepping in for Tara Fisk as our Director. The health systems budget for this upcoming fiscal year totals a little over $5.8 million, and it reflects a small decrease compared to last year. Our two primary strands of work include the African-American Infant and Maternal Mutality Prevention Initiative, or AIM, and Early Identification and Intervention, or E I I. Our AIM work is supported through external funding of $160,000 from L.A. County Department of Public Health for communications efforts, including a public awareness campaign and stakeholder engagement. This next year, we remain focused on implementing AIM projects and Help Me Grow L.A., which falls within the larger E I I bucket. Both of these efforts, AIM and Help Me Grow L.A., are co-led through a partnership with L.A. County Department of Public Health. For AIM, we're stepping into a strategic planning process to review the current AIM structure, its multiple strands of work, and to determine what is needed to focus and strengthen efforts moving forward. This next year, we're also looking to further direct our funding towards community-based AIM work, specifically the community action teams via a pooled fund that will offer backbone support for community-led collaboratives that we're working on, that are working on a local level to eliminate birth disparities for Black birthing people. We will be returning to the board in June and July to present this item in more detail. For E I I, fiscal year 2223 represents a pivotal year with Help Me Grow L.A. being fully operational at both the countywide and as well as the community level. A few examples of that include the launch this month of L.A. Help Me Grow L.A.'s centralized access point, which includes a website and a call center for both families and providers to access and support they need if they have any questions or concerns tied to a child's development. Another example includes Help Me Grow L.A.'s pathways, which earlier in this meeting, you approved two additional community collaborative. which earlier in this meeting, you approved two additional community collaboratives, for San Gabriel Pomona Regional Center and the City of Long Beach Department of Health and Human Services. This work is focused on strengthening referrals and linkages to services to better support children with or at risk of delays within a geographic region. And finally, this next year includes the sunsetting of our First Connections Initiative, which was funded since 2014 and focused on increasing access to developmental screenings and care coordination for families of children with a developmental delay. Three of the six grantees will be able to sustain services as a result of various funding streams. And as John mentioned earlier in his summary, First Connections has provided timely learning and has elevated best practices tied to EII that we have and will continue to use to guide our Help Me Grow L.A. efforts. And now I believe I will pass this along to Sharna.
Thank you, Zulie. In our organization-wide work, the offices have used parallel and similar approaches to our budget development and our forecasted investments. Much of our work and budgets reflect the evolving role of First Five L.A., our evolving structure, prioritizing integration across offices and teams, and building upon previous investments and strategies. So Kim and I will share a few examples to highlight these themes in our budgets. Starting with the Office of Government Affairs and Public Policy is leading the development and launch of an integrated early childhood policy advocacy fund, and this is in partnership with teams across the organization. Previously, our policy and advocacy funds have been held by the early care and education and communities teams' budgets, and this integrated fund is building upon our shared efforts. The Office of Data for Action is leading the development of an organization-wide data strategy that's prioritizing measuring impact and driving systems change. The Office of Government Affairs and Public Policy and the Office of Communications are working closely together to co-develop and refine the organization-wide event sponsorship and partnership building strategies to advance our advocacy priorities in a reduced budget from prior years. The Office of Equity Strategy and Learning continues to explore new approaches of working together so that we can identify opportunities for integration and connect our annual planning processes to strategic plan implementation. Support for the work planning and resource forecasting management efforts reflect our continued progress to prioritize and focus within the context of our fiscal reality. And per our board-approved 2020-2028 strategic plan, First Five L.A. will engage in periodic formal review, reflection, and refinements of elements of the strategic plan, and support for the first three-year cycle will be launched this summer. Also included in the Office for Equity Strategy and Learning Budget is support for the operationalization of the employee-led recommendations to embed DEI more explicitly in our internal and external work. This includes formalizing internal structures and processes to sustain First Five L.A.'s DEI commitments. And I'll hand it to Kim. Maybe?
Kim, if you're talking, we can't hear you.
I don't know if, I can't find Kim, but I'm.
We, uh, at First Five L.A., commissioners, we have not one, not two, but three Kims. We are looking for Kim Hall in this case, and maybe she got kicked off, Sharna.
I'm happy to jump in and pretend that I'm Kim Hall. So imagine this with a very measured and logical voice.
Hold the phone. I'm seeing her phone. I know Kim sometimes has connectivity issues. So, Kim, I, I, excuse me, Sharna, I'm seeing Kim Hall via phone, but I'm seeing you on mute, Kim. Okay, let's, um, let's assume Kim's, oh, whoop.
Wait, I think, can you hear me now?
Now we can. There you go, Kim.
Okay, so I lost my internet connection, but I am connected by phone. So sorry for the technical difficulties. I'm going to speak to the final two bullets on this slide. The first of which is about how the work of the offices is really prioritizing partnership cultivation. And what we mean by that is we're really looking at how we can streamline First Five L.A.'s investments or reduce our investments by partnering with others in the field. So I'm going to share a couple of examples of that. One of is, one of those examples is the partnership on the participation in the First Five Network. So First Five L.A. is really an active member of the Association of First Five Counties. But in addition to being an active member, we continue to invest in strengthening the capacity of the association in terms of the work that is happening around advocacy and really just aligning the fiscal reality of all First Fives and helping the association with attracting and leveraging additional funds. In addition to that, First Five California now holds the federal advocate contract on behalf of the network. So this is a contract previously held by First Five L.A., and through our partnership, we've been able to shift that investment to First Five California, although we continue to be, we continue to support it. It has decreased. We also are cultivating partnerships in terms of our work around data. So this includes our partnership with the Children's Data Network. And this partnership is really aimed at linking data for families that are served across multiple systems within the county and strengthening the data infrastructure within those existing systems. But we have other data partnerships that are, that are also able to support us strategically in our data work. So in addition to the work, the partnership with CDN, we have a partnership with the lead WIC agency. And through the data, through the partnership with the WIC agency, we're really able to develop and amplify data that reflects family voice. That data focuses on health and wellness. But not only health and wellness, but also the access and experience of families with family-serving systems in the county. Our newest partnership is with the L.A. County Chief Information Office. And here, we'll be partnering on looking at how to better integrate data within L.A. County as well as aligning other efforts, or various efforts across L.A. County to track indicators of child, family, and community well-being. So to kind of sum this up, we have multiple partnerships that are able to provide us with access and information at different levels, on different entities. And it's a move away from First Five L.A. doing a lot of primary or massive data collection efforts and really accessing existing data that's available through other systems and other, other sources. So not only do these partnerships help to strengthen our relationships across the field, it's also enabled us to reduce some of the amount of resources that we're investing in generating data and also supporting federal advocacy. The last point I'll mention is around how the offices have approached reducing and streamlining our budgets. And we've been able to do that by streamlining consultant budgets. So one of the things that's happened over the last few years with our increased focus on systems change is that First Five L.A. has really invested in developing internal capacity, so building up the skills and competence and relationships of our staff so that now staff is able to increasingly do work that was formerly performed by consultants. But as staff is being able to play more of these leadership roles, we've been able to streamline our consulting contracts so that our consulting contracts are really focused on doing critical work that goes beyond the ability and bandwidth of staff. Another feature of office budgets that we wanted to highlight in terms of investing our resources is by taking advantage of opportunities to pool our funds with the funds of others. And one example of that is with the Office of Communication, have they been able to shift away from multi-year contracts with several entities to being able to pool our funds with other early childhood advocates? The pooling of funds not only allows us to reduce our unique funding that's First Five L.A., but it's also actually resulting in more funding by putting our resources together with others and increases the potential for greater impact and greater field building than what our dollars could do alone. So with that, I am going to turn it back to Raul and Daisy.
Thank you, Kim. A big thank you to our program expert panelists for sharing some of the details and substance that make up the proposed budgets. Now we're going to shift to discussion of our internal operating costs. The operating budget was developed in a manner consistent with previous years, aligning our staffing needs to our strategic direction and priorities using historical data and information available to us to inform our estimates, all within the context of our fiscal realities. In this table, you can see that the total overall cost is just above the twenty-one, twenty-two revised budget from twenty-one point nine seven million in twenty-one, twenty-two to a proposed twenty-two point two million in twenty-two, twenty-three. The net increase is primarily the result of the increase to personnel services, consultant services, and travel expense cost categories, and are offset by a decrease in operating services. The proposed budget to support personnel costs developed in collaboration with the Human Resources and Talent Management Team includes one hundred and eighteen full-time equivalents to achieve the work proposed for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. A five percent merit performance payment adjustment is also included, as well as a three point five percent turnover or attrition rate to adjust our personnel costs and capture vacancies throughout the year. And there were seventeen vacant positions identified at the time of the budget development. In addition, we are including one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to capture salary adjustments due to market conditions or to ensure equitable pay as needed. Many of our costs are consistent with the needs related to personnel, facility supplies and services, telephone consultant support, web-based support, hardware, software needs, and professional development. Resources in our operating budget also include funds to support the continued telework needs of staff, so that includes mobile phone and internet stipends as we transition from full telework to a hybrid model, as well as onsite needs such as increased security, safety services, facility maintenance, and mileage and parking costs. Consultant costs have increased as we seek support and expertise in compensation study, recruitment, and support in developing collaborative structures and processes to sharpen and focus our work and support the refinement of our strategic plan. Additionally, as travel restrictions due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, we're beginning to relax. At the time of budget development, we are seeing an uptick in travel expenses as staff are anticipated to resume work-related travel after a two-year pause. However, any work-related travel will be informed by the latest public health guidelines and data to ensure staff safety. As a learning organization, we will continue to analyze, assess, and make recommendations to ensure that resources are fairly distributed and accessible across the organization. As First Five L.A.'s administrative costs are captured within our internal operations costs, we will now tease out the funds and discuss the proposed administrative costs for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. So of the twenty-two point two million proposed operational costs, roughly fourteen point one million represents our total administrative costs for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. The current policy calculation methodology reflects an inclusive approach to what is considered an administrative cost. We include all costs for administrative teams, including the executive director's office budget, as well as all salary and benefit costs for the EVP, all directors, and administrative assistants. Our current methodology is consistent with previous years. The total of fourteen point one million translates into an administrative cost of approximately thirteen point three percent, which is below the fifteen percent recommended through the long-term financial plan. And speaking of a long-term financial plan, we're now going to transition to an overview of some of the LTFP changes. So the long-term financial plan was presented at the June twenty-twenty meeting of the Board of Commissioners, and again at the July twenty-twenty meeting of the Board of Commissioners, where it was approved, as were the corresponding annual spending limits through fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, the end of our current strategic plan. The purpose of the LTFP is to guide the commission's financial stewardship and aid the financial stewardship role by providing a framework that shows the long-term implications of funding decisions. The financial plan approved in July twenty-twenty established annual spending limits from which we cannot deviate without returning to the board for review and approval as any changes have implications to our fund balance. This update is to share revisions to the LTFP based on the changes to expenditures and revenues grounded in new information for fiscal years twenty-twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three. So this graph reflects our revenue and expenditure projections through the duration of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-eight strategic plan, and it helps to illustrate the effect of the revenue and expenditure decisions with expenditures continuing to exceed our revenue and revenue continuing on a gradual rate of decline. What follows are some of the assumptions and adjustments that were used in updating the proposed long-term plan. The assumptions for the long-term plan includes that program costs will represent eighty-five percent of total costs on an annual basis, and administrative costs will represent no more than fifteen percent of total costs on an annual basis. Our Proposition Ten revenue will continue to be grounded in the updated revenue projections received from the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, which we commonly refer to as CDTFA. Other revenue estimates will be updated to align with projected external revenues. For fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, the other revenue includes revenues from First Five California, the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health, and the Los Angeles County Office of Education. The annual expenditure rate of decline from fiscal year twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-eight is approximate, pardon me, is approximately six point four seven percent per year, which results in an ending fund balance of approximately one hundred point seven million. And lastly, the LTFP assumes fifty percent of the total budget beginning in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one will be classified as reserve funds as approved by the board in July twenty-twenty. The adjustments included in the LTFP includes changes to the estimated spending again for fiscal years twenty-twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three. The estimates for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one were revised to align with the actual spending per the twenty-twenty-one audited financial statements. The estimated spending for twenty-one, twenty-two was revised to align with the twenty-one, twenty-two mid-year revised budget, which was approved by the board in March twenty-twenty-two. And the estimated spending for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three was revised to align with the proposed budget of approximately one hundred and five point nine nine million, which is less than the LTFP established spending limit of approximately one hundred and eight point seven, as Raul previously noted in his opening remarks. Other adjustments include revised Proposition Ten tobacco tax revenues updated to align with the latest projections from the Califor- California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, revised other revenue to account for the anticipated receipt of funds from First Five California, Los Angeles County Department of Public Health, and the Los Angeles County Office of Education, and an internal one percent downward adjustment of the Proposition Ten funds in response to payment distribution dispersment trends. And this is our internal calculation to ensure a more prudent projection of anticipated revenues. The changes to the approved long-term financial plan has resulted in an increase in revenue, a decrease in expenditures for fiscal years twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, and twenty-twenty-three, and consequently, an increase in our projected available ending fund balance at fiscal year end twenty-twenty-eight from fifty-five point eight million to one hundred point seven million. So next steps in this process, we will be sharing the proposed draft twenty-two, twenty-three budget and update to the LTFP, again with the Board of Commissioners, when we return to the Commission for Action and formal approval of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget and revised long-term financial plan on June ninth. And we thank you for your time and feedback. That concludes this presentation.
Thank you all very, very much. It's a lot of information to the commission. So I think that all of the presenters, as well as the full administration, are hoping for some feedback, understanding that we are also going to talk about the future of the long- of the long-term financial plan. We had, uh, a report just now about the current position. So, um, I think, uh, what I'd really like to do is to ask all the commissioners to think for a minute about any questions they may have about, um, any portion of the presentation. But I'm going to kind of ask a little bit in order because I want you to think of anything that might have occurred to you while you were listening that you may want to ask about. Um, the decision was made today to present the budget really kind of programmatically. Uh, and, um, sort of by, uh, section so that we tie these sort of high-level dollar figures to the different areas, uh, that we've organized ourselves into at First Five. So I, I wonder whether anyone has any questions or comments about the, um, TCFI and the center support team, that is the Center for Child and Family Impact, um, issues that were presented. Uh, I'll ask for general comments at the end, but I want to just go through if any of you had any specific questions about, uh, these programmatic areas. Seeing none on that, any questions or comments on the family supports team budget?
Commissioner Taylor and then Commissioner McCroskey.
Okay, Commissioner Taylor.
I, I have, um, on that, I have a couple of questions. One is the, uh, uh, the review of the improvements in the referral pathways. Um, it's clear that with the reduction of the number of children being born in our sys- uh, sist- in our communities, we need to know, are the referral pathways from DPSS and all these and DCFS and others, are they being monitored for improvement of the operations so that those agencies such as Welcome Babies and Select Home Visitation are getting those referrals to help these families? That's one question. The other is across the board, I know.
Okay, wait, um, Ramalas, let, let's hold it and see if there's an answer to that and then ask your next question.
I will take down Commissioner Ramalas. Um, we continue to work closely with DPSS and all our other partners to monitor and look for ways to improvement. Um, and I know that there, uh, as an example, DPSS is very closely involved with the grantees in identifying any challenges and working to, uh, adjust those and make improvements.
I, I think there's a, for DPSS, I'm heard, I heard there's a problem with them providing, uh, a system that is functional to get referrals to those families that needed because these agencies are not giving them. Uh, the, the other thing is I wanted to just make sure that we are looking at each of these different systems to make sure that those operational processes are not creating barriers for referrals, but enhancing it so that those families get those services. Just a thought.
Thank you. Yes, and we, we have been working closely with DPSS to clarify any misunderstandings and gaps between the providers and, um, the process to, to identify and smooth out any challenges, as you said, and as well as with other partners such as DCFS.
I just want to lift with them the importance of the families getting these services and them focusing on those families with new babies in the, in the smaller community. And ju- just so that, uh, we are all knowing that is happening. I know you're trying, but it, it's, it's important to get that operational system functioning for those children and families.
And Ramalas, did you have a second, um?
Yes, yes, I do. I have really three. And, and my second one is about overall sustainability uh, in, uh, the community's operation. Those regional networks are supposed to develop sustainability strategies and enhance that. I want to uplift all of your and your counterparts across all of these programs, their efforts to do sustainability so they're not wedded because we reduce revenue, uh, that they're functioning and focusing on getting other avenues of sustainability for their programs. I didn't hear about it, but I know you're doing it. So this up, I would like to see more uplift on that. And my, uh, you want to talk about that, Lee?
I, I was, thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner. I was just going to respond that actually in, uh, the community's scope of work with the regional network grantees, that's one of the objectives and areas of work. So we are, we are looking at that as we all are, uh, uh, across CCFI.
Yeah, we should all be looking at that. And then.
And did you say you had a, a third one as well?
Yes, I do. My last one is about, uh, data outcomes. Uh, we're talking about doing things across the board, but I'm not hearing about data outcomes on things that we're doing in this Center for Children and Families, such as what is the outcomes that we're getting in home visitation? What are the outcomes for our aim? What are the outcomes for these different things so that we can highlight the success you're having? So I, I would like to see more of that. I don't know if that's Kim's effort or everyone's effort, but I'm not hearing about it. I'm not seeing it. So we can share that with everyone that we're having these positive outcomes for families and children. So I'd like to have that data because I know that's something that we all agree needs to be done. So, uh, who's going to answer that question?
Maybe, maybe I could start and certainly open up to my colleague Kim if she has anything to add. Um, I think you're raising, uh, outcome, questions about outcomes regarding some of the individual investment. And the board, um, did approve, uh, resources recently. Um, for example, uh, to look at evaluating our investment with LA Care and standing up their portion of the Help Me Grow work. Um, in addition, Deanna spoke very briefly, um, to the Welcome Baby Impact Study that continues to be funded both in the current year budget and next year's budget. Um, and you know, if there's specific questions on that, would, would defer to Deanna. But these are examples where there are resources in the budget. Those evaluations have not been, uh, completed. They're, they're ongoing. Um, and we will be, as we bring some of these updates back to the board, providing some of that information. I think we called on a number of, um, future presentations upcoming up this year that we want to come back to the board on.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks, Ramalas.
Sheila, I have one more thing to say. Can I say one more thing?
If you promise not to say anything about the rest of it.
Oh, well, first of all, I want to commend all of you on a well-done, outstanding effort on this budget. And I thought this was excellent work done by everyone. The leadership by Kim, John and all the team and the managers and all the staff. This was great work and I want to thank you for that. It shows that we're focusing on the fact that we do have a reduction in revenue and dealing with our stewardship across the whole organization. Just wanted to say that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's lovely. Thank you, Ramalas. Uh, who was the other commissioner who wanted to speak?
Commissioner McCroskey.
Okay, Jackie, hi, go ahead.
Hello. I, I actually want to build on Ramalas's last point. Um, Deanna and I were both around when the First Five Commission got started and the conversation was really quite different. Um, and it's much less fun when we get to this point than it was at the initiation. But kudos to everybody. I could not only see the outcome in terms of budget decisions, but the kind of collaboration that you guys are doing across the different program sections. Um, I could really hear the through line of strategic work with the county and with other external partners and, and collaboration is always easy to say and hard to do, hard to bring off. So I'm i- in great admiration of what you've done. And, and really my question had to do with the, the, um, the extent to which you think that the, the organizational design change played into this. So having an office for child and family as opposed to several different program offices. Um, I, I was just very impressed that, for, for example, the, um, collaboration around KRA in the Best Start Communities, for example. And I, I just wondered if, if there, there are key things you think other than really hard work um, that led to your ability to put together this budget.
Maybe I could start just because you use the example of, of the center and certainly open it up to others. Um, and really appreciate your, uh, comment, Commissioner. I do think the changes in the structure have facilitated, um, some of the cross-team planning and strategic thinking, um, that you're referencing. County partnership is one example. Sustainability is another example. Connection between home visiting and Help Me Grow, Deanna mentioned that in her work, um, in her budget is another example. And you mentioned, um, KRA with Best Start Communities. I mean, those are just a handful of examples where the center is endeavoring to work across our functional teams in a much more integrated and strategic way. Having said that, it's a work in progress and we've got, um, more, more to do in that front. And over the course of the next year, we have a couple, we're calling them, um, integration teams, but we have a couple of examples of this work where we want to dig it even further to ensure that we're maximizing those opportunities to integrate our work and not just say it's, oh, it's ECE or it's, uh, families or it's, uh, communities or health. So, um, it's a work in progress, but really, um, applaud the team for the progress we've made to date because it's really the directors on this call and their teams that are doing it.
And maybe if I could just take twenty-two seconds, um, to weigh in as well. Um, I, I think it's such an interesting and important question, Jacqueline, and as John noted, um, it, it is a work in progress. Um, our new structure is, is not even a couple of years old and, um, it is an evolution. But I, I think we are finding that both within the centers and across the functions broadly, uh, we are seeing a lot more intentionality in terms of alignment and focus and centering of DEI. Um, I really want to commend our office chiefs, um, for really holding org-wide and org-wide orientation and lens to their work with an eye towards how both to integrate and align their efforts as well as with in particular the work of the Center for Child and Family Impact. So it's not a O-GAP policy agenda as an example. It's a First Five LA policy agenda. It's not an ODFA data strategy. It's a First Five LA data strategy. And then those examples of org-wide initiatives can only be developed and structured in advance by working across the organization broadly. So in that regard, I, I think the structure has helped. And I also want to acknowledge it is, as John said, a work in progress and we've stepped our toes and we, uh, endeavor to learn from those, um, bruised toes and make some refinements. And, um, consistent with our learning orientation, move on from there. But thank you for looking that up.
If I can also quickly, if I can also quickly add that, um, just leaning into our process imperative, Commissioner McCroskey, are the way that we adopt, the way that we develop our budget is completely different than we have done in, um, in many, for many years ago. We are working in a very collaborative way where we're really looking at a work, uh, a work planning process to really highlight what work we are prioritizing and where we're being more strategic. And we're having these alignment conversations across the organization where everyone is hearing about what's in their budget and what that work is related. So just leaning back on our processes too, along with our, uh, our new structure has also helped.
Thank you. Uh, any other commissioners want to comment or ask questions about, um, the budget? The community's team budget or ECE, health systems, uh, government affairs, any of the other areas that were covered, uh, in the budget? And then the presentation on the long-term financial plan was, uh, for the current, uh, position. Uh, as you know, our next item is about essentially the future of it. But any questions on the current position of the long-term financial plan? Um, any of the data presented or, uh, the approaches? I don't hear any. Lynn, did you see any hands?
I don't see any hands up either.
Okay, uh, let's ask if there's any public comment on, uh, this, uh, item on the agenda.
There are no public comments on this item.
Okay, um, so it sort of moves rather naturally, I think, into, uh, the next item. But let us take a short break before we go to that item. Uh, let's say, uh, ten minutes or nine minutes, uh, come back at three o'clock. So, uh, see you back at three sharp. Thank you so much. So see you back at three sharp. Thank you so much. Okay, assuming everybody stood up and ran around the block, that's a very good thing for our exercise. Now let's get back to exercising our mind. We never left session, so we don't need to be called back into session again. We are moving now to item number seven, which, as I indicated, relates to our long-term financial plan. But it's really how we need to further update it, given whatever we find and report about our so-called fiscal reality, which really has to do with how we eventually align our revenue with our expenditures. It's always going to be a difficult question about how we do it. And my own opinion, of course, has always been that we need to probably think of a way to increase our revenue. And I praise those on the staff and Kim who have been seeking a way to do that. But let's start with a report. Raul, are you going to lead off on this item?
Yes, Madam Chair, and thank you for the invite. And again, good afternoon, Commissioners. Today's presentation is really building upon the support and the direction from our chair and Commissioners during the March 10th board meeting. Staff has been diligently reflecting on the use of the current approved long-term financial plan and the importance of bringing greater clarity to the alignment of our revenues and our expenditures for the organization. It is fair to say these are difficult issues that we, staff and board will need to navigate and that it is important that we bring strategic thinking to this effort moving forward. We also acknowledge that we have work to do to analyze the issues raised by aligning revenues and expenditures, pairing back our expenditures and ensuring a responsible reserve. Which brings us to today's discussion and engagement on how we update our long-term financial plan moving forward in the context of our fiscal reality. Our objective for today is to share our current thinking and rationale for updating the long-term financial plan in the context of our fiscal reality. In my presentation, I will be highlighting some of the initial feedback received from our Budget and Finance and Executive Committee meeting back on May 4th. Our attempt for today is to provide board members the opportunity to share our insight and feedback on key considerations staff is developing around our initial guiding principles. To share with you some initial trade-offs and considerations for timing of aligning the revenues and expenditures and the potential use of our available fund balance moving forward. But before we move on, we need to ground ourselves on our current fiscal reality. And as Daisy shared with us, our fiscal health continues to be strong. Based on the State Department of Finance and CDTFA, the June 2021 forecast, we are projecting a one-time uptick in revenues for fiscal year 2122. And we are reflecting a steady decline for the subsequent years moving out. Which if these projections come to fruition by the end of our strategic plan in fiscal year 2728, we are projecting an available fund balance of roughly $100.7 million. And though this is promising, our adjusted long-term financial plan continues to show projected expenditures exceeding well above our annual revenue. With the biggest driver of our expenditure still being our continued investment in direct service. And we all understand that this in the long run is unsustainable over the long term. Which leads us to today's focus and conversation on how best to align our long-term financial plan to be the most effective tool in our toolbox. But before we can start aligning our long-term financial plan, we need to be familiar with our current practice. Currently, our plan is a fixed 10-year plan with fiscal year 18, from fiscal year 1819 through fiscal year 2728, which gets updated on an annual basis based on prior year audited financials, updated revenue projections and board-approved budget, as Daisy reviewed with us earlier in her presentation. Our current updates to the long-term financial plan does not consider revenues and expenditures beyond 2728. However, our fiscal realities and stewardship responsibilities require us to look beyond fiscal year 2728, which means transitioning from a 10-year fixed plan to a rolling long-term financial plan that is updated consistently to reflect 10 outer years. As we move from a fixed plan to a rolling plan, staff is thinking through key considerations for updating the long-term financial plan in the context of both our fiscal reality and the outcomes we are holding ourselves accountable for. Key long-term financial plan considerations that staff have been developing and having internal conversations is around what are the guiding principles to inform our multi-year planning. In addition, we are having internal conversations about when is the right time for our revenue and our expenditures to align. And outside of our 50% reserve, what is the purpose of the remaining fund balance and how should it be used moving forward? I'd like to share with you some of the initial guiding principles we have begun to consider and have shared with our committee members at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting back in May 4th. We started, we started with initial considerations about when and if and should we align our expenditures and revenues by a time certain. We also feel that we need to adhere to our existing reserve policy, which equates to 50% of our annual budget. We're also wanting to minimize a dramatic fiscal cliff during the remaining years of the 2020-28 strategic plan by adopting a philosophy of no more than a 10% reduction from one year to the next. We're also wanting to minimize our disruption in the work that currently advances first five LA's priorities. And of course, we want to strategically align, deploy and maximize our resources with our funds, with our fund balance to focus our work and the impact that we seek. Now I want to share with you some of the additional consideration and nuances based on the Budget and Finance Executive Committee meeting. At this time, again, I would like to acknowledge our Budget and Finance Chair, Commissioner Taylor, for his leadership in this discussion and those additional considerations that I will be highlighting now. The consideration that was brought up from committee members was how do we account for potential changes in the external environment? How do we make sure to mitigate unintended impacts on children and families? And of course, how do we be prudent in the use of the fund balance? And most importantly, there was a reaffirmation of the importance of deployment and maximization of our fiscal resources aligned with the impact that we seek. And based on this feedback, these guiding principles will support decision makings around the next two considerations. When to align revenues and expenditures and how to maximize use of the fund balance. In terms of aligning revenues and expenditures, staff have begun to explore trade-offs and consideration. First, implications of aligning revenues and expenditures at the end of the strategic plan versus a time thereafter. Depending on the timeline for aligning revenues and expenditures may require a greater reduction in expenditures over a shorter period of time. So as we bring the alignment closer to where we are today, there will be greater reductions that are needed in order to align. We would also need to consider the impact of alignment timing on the organization, the systems change work that were currently underway and the outcomes that we seek. We will also need to consider what are the implications to the remaining fund balance. A near-term alignment date will result in a growing fund balance at the same time as significant annual reductions in expenditures are happening. Which a larger fund balance will provide more flexibility to stabilize revenues and respond to changes in the external environment. While at the same time, while a target date that is further out would yield, would yield a smaller fund balance, which may limit our ability to stabilize revenues and respond to changes in the external environment. Now to our third consideration, the potential use of our fund balance after our existing 50% reserve based on the budget year is put aside. One potential consideration is to balance the budget, which is our current practice. And that is to use our remaining fund balance to fill the gap between revenues and our board-approved spending cap. Another option is to work towards stabilizing our revenue by pursuing a higher rate of return to generate annual investments income that can be used to mitigate annual declines to tobacco tax revenue. This may require revisions to our investment policy and an analysis to determine how much of our fund balance should be used to invest into a market in order to yield a higher return on our fund balance. So what is being presented today represents an even more intentional effort to embrace our fiscal reality and deploy fiscal resources strategically to maximize impact. A clear understanding of our fiscal reality, revenue and expense trends and learning from strategic planning implementation will help us plan wisely for the future as we make strategic choices about the work we will and will not do. We are eager to hear from our board members today. We would like feedback on the guiding principles that I have shared with you as well as your insight on some of the initial trade-offs and considerations for aligning our revenues and our expenditures and the use of our fund balance. This includes your guidance on updating our investment policy. And of course, how we would align our revenues and our expenditures moving forward. Based on our conversation today, staff will incorporate this feedback from the board and begin a deeper analysis of our options as part of the first cycle of strategic plan review and refinement this summer. And in the fall of 2022, we will bring back our initial recommendations. I will now pass it to our board in order to to engage in an open discussion with our committee members. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Raul. And thank you very much for the presentation. So let me recap for Commissioners because as Raul has indicated and as Kim has indicated earlier, they really do want us to opine about the best course or courses of action. So as you could see from the presentation, there are certain guiding principles to help figure out what to do about a declining fund balance because our revenue is less than our expenditures so far. So they've indicated one principle is eventually we're going to need to align revenue and expenditure and recommended that this could happen by 2028. And indicated what sort of that would mean. The second principle is to ratify the reserve policy we adopted. As you recall, it was 25%. We raised it to 50% of the annual budget. And that is prudent, but not terribly prudent. That just means that we could go for six months, you know, with no revenue or longer than six months with a little revenue, but it would pretty much hit our reserve. The, the fund itself, however, is a kind of reserve. That is, we've been eating away at it to balance the budget over the years. And yet, of course, it is not necessarily replenished. The third principle is to minimize dramatic fiscal cliffs. So with a the strategic plan which started in 2020, was an eight-year period, now is a six-year remaining period to try to not have greater reductions than a 10% cut every year moving to 2028. And therefore, to minimize disruption in the work. And therefore, to minimize disruption in the work that's already underway. Um, one of them is to, uh, something that they have put in guiding principles to maximize fiscal resources. Uh, and what that really means is when we look at the update considerations, um, we, they've asked us in the next slide to affirm that the long-term financial plan will extend if we wanted to beyond 28. And to have a discussion about whether we agree that that's a good target for the time that expenditures and revenues would align or whether we're worried that it should be pushed further out. Um, and that means should we use the remaining fund balance? Use it up essentially, or how should we use it? Uh, only to backfill or the question then, do we want to invest differently with the fund balance that we have to bring in greater revenue, which is a slightly elevated risk, but I think uh, what's being recommended is not high risk. Um, so the uh, first scenario was the target date. Uh, they're saying, you know, 28 and um, but it would be, as they indicated, maybe a 6.5 or 7% decrease annually through 28. Uh, the fund balance would grow if we did that. But um, we still have to think about stabilizing the revenue and that really has to do with the next slide about whether uh, we can find some way to revise our investment policy for a higher rate of return. Uh, I think it would also include other less sure issues like working for legislation to add to the tax revenue coming into first slide, but that is, you know, is very unsure and is not on the table at the moment. So I think um, what they would like from you commissioners is feedback on whether you agree with what they have said. If you have a different idea about a target date, if you still agree with the 50% reserve, if you think the fund balance should just be used, uh, extended to backfill or whether we should change the way we invest it or anything else that you want to say about this, but they do want your feedback. So uh, Linda, do you see anyone who is willing to jump into the fray and say um, what they think about some of these issues?
I see no jumpers yet.
Can I recommend that, that we do a roll call and give each of the uh, commissioners an opportunity to kind of give their opinion? And that way, it's no harm, no foul, it's no right, no wrong, it's important that you say what you think needs to be done. Uh, underlining all of this, and I want to remind all the commissioners is the financial stewardship of this organization. So saying nothing is not helping the organization decide how they want to go to meet that stewardship. So please give us your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ramalas. I, I, you know, I agree. I, um, when I was a law professor, I didn't just call on people because often they didn't feel prepared and it was embarrassing, but I really, really, really would like the commissioners here present to opine. Um, we are not really the experts, but we are the ones who rely on the experts and give feedback about their recommendations and really create, you know, the reality of it. Um, so uh, is there anyone who wants to volunteer? I certainly would ask, perhaps you've seen this in your other committees and have some something to add about whether you agree or have some concerns.
Commissioner Abdo has her hand up.
Well, thank you. Judy, go ahead.
I, I really am very appreciative of the staff's putting, putting these questions in front of us and they're thinking about long-term, I think is really important and I, I tend to agree with their analysis. The work that we're supposed to be doing is not going to go away just because the money reduces. Children are still going to be born, they're still going to be between zero and five years old, and they're still going to need attention. And that's our commission's work. And so I think what we need to do is figure out what is the best way to continue to do that work and to reduce uh, our expenditures or increase, now this is what I want to see, increase our income from other sources and somehow continue the work and make sure that we don't uh, jump to uh, reduce our work too fast. I think we need to, to um, to look very carefully at what work we have and what, what work is coming and what possible income may be coming, uh, just as the staff kind of laid out for us. I don't know if that helps, but.
Oh, well, I think, uh, let me ask Raul to review just one piece, which is if the commission were to agree that we would like the uh, revenues and expenditures to align by 2028. What would be the annual reduction? Cause I see the target date scenario slide had um, currently 6.5% decrease. Would that bring us into alignment by 28, 29? 6.5 a year.
So uh, currently what we're showing between now and 27, 28 is a six and a half percent uh, reduction. Does it get us aligned in 28, 29? It does not. If you were to extrapolate, and this is why it's important for us to go beyond 27, 28. If you were to extrapolate and if we were to align our revenues by 28, 29, you're, you would see what I would, what we are considering a potential fiscal cliff and that would be an 18% to even up to 26% reduction, depending on how we're looking at the numbers um, beyond 27, 28.
A 26%? Wait, I don't understand. 26% a year? Because that would be over 100% in four years.
No, what to, to be clear, so in 27, 28, so in the prior years of between now and 27, 28, we are reducing our expenditures by six and a half percent. If we were to align, if we were to align our expenditures to our revenue, that would require a reduction in our expenditures of up to almost 26%.
A year?
In one year, in one year.
But if we increase it each year by 10% or some other percent uh, there, that follow-up falloff would not happen in the way you're saying it. Then that's what's confusing.
Correct. We would have to revise our current spending cap that the board has approved between now and 27, 28.
So if we reduced it by 8% or 9% or 10%, when will it align? It's a question.
Then we would start, then we would start aligning. So if you were, if you were just going to go with a natural alignment of six and a half percent, we would in, in one of the internal, and I don't want to get into this detail. It would go beyond 28, 29. I mean, we would still need to do some scenario planning on how that looks, but it would definitely go beyond 28, 29.
And, and.
So I don't under.
Go ahead.
Wait, I don't understand then how we get feedback about um, what, you know, what, what you're saying. In essence, you, you use 28, 27, 28 as a, a, a target date, but then you're saying it's not a target date and therefore you would like the board to tell you that we can reduce expenditures more gradually and go out beyond 28? And that is what the staff recommends because otherwise there's a cliff?
So this is what I'm, I, and, and let me just, I, I'm going to take one more step at it. Our current fiscal, our current long-term financial plan takes us through fiscal year 27, 28. And you see what we have with the board approved was a six and a half percent reduction from year to year. So that means in fiscal year 27, 28, our projected revenue is $59 million and our projected spending cap is seven, roughly $78 million. In 28, 29, if we were to align our projected revenue, which is $57 million, that reduction of $77.8 million in 27, 28 in expenditures in 27, 28, would, we would have to go down to 57 million. That is a 26.43% reduction.
So, so let, let me, let me. Sheila, can I? Recommending a larger cut each year from now on?
What, what, what? The intent, this is Kim. The, the intent for today is to get some feedback from the board on at least directionally on the principles. So for example, with number one is affirming, we want to bring clarity to aligning revenues and expenditures by a time certain. And if directionally, the board is saying yes, and we should be doing it sooner rather than later, then we want to take that piece of feedback along with feedback on um, the, the degree of fiscal cliffs year over year. And we would then come, do some work over the summer, come back to the Budget and Finance Committee and the board in the fall, saying informed by feedback on some of these key levers. Here are two or three specific scenarios and some of the, the actual trade-offs and considerations. So our intent today is not to make a recommendation for a time certain, rather it's to solicit board feedback on these principles. We'll inform development of specific recommendations.
So the key questions, uh, consider, uh, about the consideration, number two, says by what target date will annual expenditures and revenues align? That is something we don't know or we do know?
We, we know that there are.
Depends on what the cuts are.
Yeah, it, well, it, it, we, we, we know, we, we know that there are a number of different scenarios for aligning revenues and expenditures. And part of um, you know, part of the analysis of the consideration of trade-offs are some of, some of the reductions. The sooner the target date for long revenues and expenditures, the more significant the cuts.
Yeah.
Um, and so that then bumps up against, you know, to what extent are we trying to minimize dramatic reductions in our work and with our partnerships? So my, 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 what I'm hearing at least initially is uh, number one, we definitely want to pick a time certain to anchor our analysis and we should look very hard at aligning by the end of the strategic plan. That would require us to modify.
You're breaking up, so we don't understand you completely.
Okay, all right. Raul or John? If I'm breaking up?
I'm moving into the sunroom.
I.
I'm not in the sunroom.
So to, to pick that up, like, what Kim, I think the direction she was going is if we were to get the direction from the board that it's good to align revenues and expenditures sooner than um, the end of the strategic plan in 27, 28, that means we would look at reductions higher than the 6.5% year after year after year. So that's the kind of direction. If the direction was to um.
Well, let me, because you're, you're breaking up too. Let me ask, maybe so yes, no question.
She's having problems.
Right now, we've indicated that we want a 6.5% reduction. Um, that in essence would be uh, really would be 16 years before we would get aligned, right? Because. Yeah. So uh, and if we say we want it sooner, that would mean we would want a higher level of reduction, not necessarily the same level every year, but the higher level of reduction. To me, that would relate, there's my feedback, to how quickly we're using up the fund. Um, because that is um, it's not just about are we reducing, you know, uh, over 16 years, but can we last 16 years with the current fund? And if we do the reductions like that, it seems to me the answer was no. And. I think that, that, that would be information that we would need.
Yep. And so, so Sheila, that would be an example. I don't know if the issue is with, can, can people hear me or the issue may be with.
Yes, but you're really breaking up.
I saw your phone. She's having communication problems.
Okay.
You're both breaking up.
I think this, I think the issue may be with your phone, Sheila.
Okay, good. If, if, if it's not breaking it from anyone else, go ahead then.
Okay, um, I, I think the um, I think the uh, we, we, we know under one scenario of just letting the, the revenues run out um, and let revenues and expenditures align when they align, it's out in like 2034, 2035. Now, that's one approach. It would certainly minimize impact, which is um, a principle, but it would be very, um, it would not be a, a strategic approach because it doesn't really reflect consideration of the strategic plan and strategic priorities. It would basically be saying, let's just do the status quo for the next 12 years. So again, getting some feedback on the principles gives us something to work with over the summer to come back with some very specific dates, like here's what it'll look like if we, um, if we uh, shoot for alignment of revenues and expenditures by 2028, 2029. And here's how we would evaluate it, given those, those um, uh, principles that the board discussed and gave us feedback on. So that's our goal here. I, I know it's, it, I, I'm sensing it feels very unsatisfying because we don't have the concrete uh, numbers, but our, our intent was really to, to begin the conversation with the board at the principal level as we did with Budget and Finance and Executive Committee.
And I do have Commissioner Ramos and Tilton up next to speak.
Hi, thank you, Linda. Um, can you all hear me okay? I was having some internet issues as well.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. I'll try to make it brief in case my internet uh, starts to mess with me. I don't think that we should align revenues and expenditures by 2028. I think we heard Raul say it would be a fiscal cliff. If we continue at this rate, six and a half percent, um, and we, and it, we were to align in, let's say, 2035, 2036, I think that would be waiting way too long. Maybe we can find a middle of the road such as a 2031 goal or do an exercise to see what that would look like. What would be the reduction per year to, to align in 2031 and compare that to potential services that we may have to reduce or cut? Um, and then, and then take, this way, I think it's a little more concrete. Um, but those are my initial thoughts.
I mean, I think this is why we're talking about the principles only right now because it's too soon to make an exact recommendation, given all the variables and the situation in our state, in our world, all that kind of stuff. So I think, I think agreeing on the principles or making comments on the principles is what the focus should be right now. And then we can start delving into recommendations on percentages and things like that later.
Commissioner Tilton and then Commissioner Taylor.
Yes, um, Ramalas, you made me feel guilty because I'm sort of spinning around with numbers right now. Um, and I note that not a lot of people have jumped in and I don't think any of the general audience is jumping in because it's, it's hard. It's complicated. So thank you for staff for this incredible presentation um, that we're trying to um, positively in, in a constructive way respond to. I, I am thinking that um, it's very difficult to, it's very difficult to have um, a very affirmative um, opinion about some of these questions when we are in such a changing environment. So right off the bat, I would just say. So right off the bat, I would just say, let's look at that fifty percent reserves. And, and decide, do we really need a fifty percent reserve? That immediately occurs to me to be something very fungible. I, I want to talk about the long-term impact and then jump all over something Ramalas said, which is outcomes. If we are going to be talking about reductions, what will those reductions be? And what, um, is the impact of that? If, if we're talking about twenty twenty eight or twenty thirty six. Um, the children that we're talking about, of the infants and toddlers, they're going to be adults. And how have we impacted the world? And so. I honestly think that if we're going to talk about reductions, we need to talk about what it is. We are, we are reducing and look at the, the outcome and the impact of what we're doing so that we make those decisions. In a way that has the least, um, has the least impact on our effectiveness. One of the things that, that I, and I assume other commissioners are asked all the time, is what difference has first five made? And I can take my experience in child abuse and show that I believe the, the, the focus on zero to five. Has made a profound impact on the safety and wellbeing of children, because these are the children most at risk. They are the ones who are more likely to be hurt, to be killed, uh, to be, to fail to thrive, um, to suffer from. Uh, any number of problems, including fetal alcohol syndrome. So. I, I'm saying that I guess as a commissioner, I would want to know as we go forward. What would be our, um, criteria for these reductions? And can we be a little bit more. Visible, uh, regarding the difference that we're making. Here's the difference we're making. Um, with this particular expenditure.
Diane, can I, can I?
Yeah.
Jump in here for a minute. Sheila needs to be let back into the meeting.
Yeah, Linda, is that something you can help with?
All right. Yes, we're working on it right now. We just have to locate her on the other side.
Okay.
So.
Go ahead, Diane.
I, I am just, I'll wind up with just saying, what, what difference are we making? What are our outcomes? How, um, how important, um, is each expenditure to the health, safety and wellbeing of, of children, zero to five? And so I would want to know as we go forward, if we're going to increase the reductions, what, what are they going to be? Personally, as everybody knows, I'm a huge advocate for home visitation. And I would say, um, if we cut back on home visitation or are supportive home visitation. We are going to reduce, um, the, the whole, the, the outcomes that we want to achieve, uh, for health and safety and wellbeing of, of zero to five. So that, that's my two cents. Um, outcomes, I want to hear more about it. Um, I want us to be, to be out there and say, this is the difference we're making. And then, uh, look at the long-term impact of what we're doing. And then maybe it will make more sense to look at where we want to be in two thousand thirty six. Uh, I don't know if I'm in, I don't think I'm going to be around by then anyway. I, I certainly, uh, do care about the, those, those zero to five who are going to be running the country, uh, by then, so.
And yeah, that, that's helpful feedback, um, that does tie back to, um, helps us think about the principles more. Um, robustly relative to, um, strategic investment, maximizing impact. Um, clarity around return on our investment to the greatest degree possible. So I appreciate your comments.
Apparently Sheila's back in.
I am.
Okay.
I'm with you. Actually, I've been with you. I just haven't been able to speak, but I, I think you guys, you're doing just great. Keep going. Was somebody next?
Commissioner Taylor, you're up next.
Okay, uh, uh, thank you, uh, Diane. That's good because we're finally hearing some other thinking. And, and we don't, I don't want just my thinking to be there. I want to hear all of your guys' thinking. Uh, this is great work that we're doing. Uh, what we have to do is come up with a strategy that balances both. Um, one of the things that was brought up in, uh, the budget and finance. It's taking some of that funds that we have from, uh, the fund balance. And using that to generate income so that we could continue to fund these programs at some level to counteract. The loss of revenue from the, um, uh, the state funds. And so, uh, what does the commission think of that strategy? Is there, uh, oh, is there, uh, a thought that you might be willing to entertain that thinking? Anyone?
So what Commissioner Taylor is raising is, um, one of the considerations that Raul spoke to related to potential uses of the fund balance. And as he noted, we currently use the fund balance to fill the gap between revenues and expenditures. Which is arguably not the most strategic use of the fund balance. And it's more of a default than a, an intentional strategy. An alternative use that we talked with the budget and finance and executive committees about, as Raul noted. Was to revise our investment policy to allow First Five LA to invest its fund balance. In a different vehicle that offers the potential for a greater rate of return. And as the, the chair noted in her comments, um, that there's, there is somewhat, um, increased risk associated with that. And, um, there's a strong potential for us to increase our rate of return and use some of those dollars. Um, to help stabilize, um, the steady decline in tobacco tax revenues. If the board is generally open directionally to us re-looking at how we invest our dollars, which right now is in a basically no-risk county pool. Then that would be a good example of some work we would undertake over, um, the summer, building upon some initial discussions with our county colleagues. And come back to the board with the analysis around how much could be generated, how big would the fund balance need to be? Over what period of time, um, et cetera. But direction.
And I'm assuming that's, I'm assuming that's not an either or, right? In other words, we would still have to use the fund balance if we were not doing deeper cuts. To make up the difference as well as investing some of it?
You know, that's, that's some of the analysis we need to do, Sheila, because frankly, for the fund balance to generate. Um, a, a sufficiently high rate of return to really help mitigate the annual declines in tobacco tax revenues. The fund balance would need to be a certain size. And that, that's the, the math we need to do. Um, so I'm not sure if they're mutually exclusive, certainly not right away. But if the strategy, the board and were to agree, you know, we really need to be generating a couple million dollars a year to help mitigate those annual declines. That would require the, the, the fund balance to be a certain size, which in turn would have implications for, you know, expenditures. So I, I don't think, I, we, we can't both run out the, the fund balance and generate. The, the kind of rate of return required to mitigate revenue reductions. But this is the work we would, we would do over the summer if the board said, you know, yeah, let's, let's take a look at. Options for generating a higher rate of return. The idea of a revenue stabilization use for the fund balance is, is appealing to us. Come back and tell us how it might work, what it would look like, et cetera.
Okay, does anyone wish to speak to that? Um, and anything else about the fund balance?
Wow.
I do see Commissioner Oski's hand up.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, yes, but it's, it's not in direct response to your question, Ramalas, so that's why I was hanging back a little bit.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think there's another underlying question in addition to the one that Ramalas and Diane have, have spoken to, Data. I, I think the other underlying question is, who do we see as the sustaining partners for the efforts that we've invested in? Over the longer term. Um, and I think those answers are going to be different in different programmatic areas. So my example for that, it's like Diane, very strong advocate for home visiting. And I think First Five has got to continue to play the, the kind of leading role that's played in that area. Because the county system isn't in shape to continue those efforts without, I think. Uh, First Five investment. I, 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 I think, but I think there are policy partners, there are program partners, there are. Potentially operational partners. And if, if we're more intentional about. How those partners are positioned, maybe it helps us to make some decisions about refining our investments. And strengthening those partnerships in ways that are looking towards the long term.
Can I share with you on that, Jacqueline? A good example is, is M H S A funding. Could be used to provide, uh, services for home visitation. Because of the trauma, these poorer communities' childrens are experiencing at a younger age. And enhancing that and getting our partners in, uh, mental health to step back up. And dedicate a portion of their funding. It wasn't a past twenty million dollars. That would offset what we're spending twenty million dollars on now. That could be used in, 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 I'm just throwing out ideas. I'm not saying it's an end result, but that's an example of what could be done in partner with our community partners. And doing that and, and making that, because we live with focus on the children zero to five. Which just using M H S A money. And believe me, this is the time to do it, if we're going to do it at all. And getting our collaborative partners in mental health to come back to the table on that issue. Just as one example.
No, e- exactly. And in relationship to our desire overall as a state to invest in behavioral health, right? Sort of how do we translate that? How do we show up as partners in, in those discussions? Yes.
Yeah, so that, that's just one example. I'm just throwing out ideas. Hopefully others will come up with some creative things to help out. But the other way we can look at this is look at both strategies of investment of the thing. And what is the prudent amount that we could use? Because we already have a projection of a hundred million dollars by the end of twenty twenty eight. But if we do that in concert with getting other funding, reducing our commitment. And making appropriate reductions based on what is really going out there. Uh, I, I keep talking about it, but when you have a reduction in the number of children being born. How much money are we dedicating to that under home visitation? And is it prudent to continue at the level we are? Do we need to come up with a different strategy? That is more proportionate to doing that. And if we're not getting the referrals out there for those families, what are we doing? And we need to look at systems issues, if that's the case. So, I mean, we can do both. And I would suggest, and since I'm not hearing it, let's get a profile that says, if we increase our reduction. Of, of funding by eight percent, what does that look like in a projection? Ten percent each year, what does that look like? And at what point does that align? The other thing is, is that if we can get our community partners to step up and say, okay. How much of that, uh, money will come from, uh, D C F S? How much will come from, uh, M H S A for home visitation for those families, zero to five? Who can use that services and get those referrals to help stabilize those families? And help them to be successful with their children. Uh, that is critical. More eyes on that child is a better thing. And those families is the most important thing to keep those children safe. So I, I'm just saying, we need to come up with those, I'm suggesting that not only do we look at the money we have. But how can we get our partners to come up and take on some of that burden? And since we've already approved it, proved that it works, that's where the data comes in to prove it. And now how can we collaborate to sustain it for the benefit of all children in each of these different, uh. Arenas of services provided by the county. Uh, and that's important. And then we can also go to the state and ask for more funds for that, for our partners. To give it to focus on this issue. Just a thought. I'm just throwing out ideas.
No, that's good. Well, let, let me summarize a little bit. I did not hear a great deal of support for a specific target date. I think there is a lot of concern about wanting more information about what that would mean. Uh, or whether it's a kind of an arbitrary idea. Um, and perhaps there might be a different approach in terms of suggesting a specific percentage of cuts. That is palatable in each year. If it's higher than six point five, if it's, you know, I don't know, eight point five, nine point five. Um, the second thing is, I think I heard support for exploring investing our fund. Um, in a way that brings more income. Understanding that that would mean we likely would not be able to dip into it as much. So we want to make sure that we don't keep it on a collision course in a way, but keep our eye on it. The third thing is, I wonder if there's a way to prioritize what might be phased out in terms of what we're funding. Um, I assume that's the approach that's being taken, but other foundations on whose boards I have sat. Um, uh, let their grantees know that foundations are not really expected to do ongoing funding. Uh, and that the idea is that they need to become more self-sufficient. Which is really what Ramalas is talking about in terms of helping to identify partners. Um, whether, you know, the county can undertake more in the home visiting arena, um, et cetera. But to sort of prioritize what might be phased out. Which is, um, how we approach those cuts. Uh, in terms of community partners, I think we also want to look, as First Five has creatively. Uh, at what can be covered by, uh, Medi-Cal or other kinds of insurance payments. As we were also looking at for, uh, and, and successful at getting, uh, for home visitation. Um, so I think the only other thing remaining is the question of the reserve. Uh, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm the, you don't know what tomorrow's going to bring, so spend it today kind of person. So I'm not the best person to ask about a reserve. But I think it's likely good to continue our adherence to keeping or building toward. A fifty percent of one year's, uh, budget reserve. Knowing that we can change that if we get to a point, you know, in five years, that that's just not working for us. That things are dropping too fast, uh, in terms of what, you know, we might need. Uh, the only additional thing is, and as I said earlier, the most iffy thing, I think, is finding other sources of revenue through legislation. But I wouldn't give up on it. Um, so I think, uh, I don't know whether that summarizes. Deficiently to give direction to the staff or if there are other additions or disagreements. Um, from commissioners.
From, from the, the team perspective, Sheila, I think you summarized the conversation very well. And, um, I, that was very, um, to the extent it's aligned with. How other commissioners, um, experienced conversations, super helpful to the staff team.
Can I add one more example? Uh, and the endowment is doing a community kind of approach. Maybe not focused like ours is, but a collaboration to, with someone like the endowment or something that is in alignment. With what we want to do or convincing them to support what we're doing could be a, a way to, uh, continue that. And find another strategy that augments that effort that we're doing in, in partnership with that kind of. Uh, program or person or organization out there. I'm just throwing out ideas. And I'm sure you guys have better ideas than I do, but I'm just saying, we need to come up with different strategy. And then I would like, uh, like, uh, the chair is saying, give us that breakdown on what eight to nine or ten percent looks like. And in alignment with, uh, getting, trying to get others to step up and give funding and things of that nature to, uh, to our program. And, and, uh, simply put it in a collaboration with, for example, uh, D M H. Uh, to give, uh, M H S A funds to us to support what we're trying to do. Uh, that's, that is a thing that we can, uh, facilitate that, which could happen for a lot of kids. And as I said, before they stepped back from doing that, it was like a twenty million dollars. So rather than have them do it, they can do it through us. That kind of collaboration is something that we can do and. And you guys can work out on an idea of what that would look like. The same thing for DCFS. If DCFS wants us to do it, when the collaboration with them, what does that look like? And what does that funding standard look like in support of the children that come into DCFS? Especially these babies. That's a very important issue. Just thinking, just throwing out ideas.
Thank you very much, Ramallah, and thanks to everyone. If you have any second thoughts or you didn't want to speak up because you weren't certain, be sure to communicate them to Kim. I think she'll, and she'll get them to the right person. Linda, are there any public comments on this item?
There are no public comments on this item.
Okay, so mindful of the hour, let us move to item eight. Just to summarize quite briefly, there's a proposed amendment to the executive succession plan because in the current plan, the board is directed to find an external executive search team. However, in virtually every other board I serve on, we have also identified the need to be sensitive to and consider our internal candidates. And it's become even more clear during the pandemic, certainly in the county. People who work with us and for us are feeling less secure than ever about the work situation, about, it, it's just everything seems to be an upheaval. So, I can tell you, in the county, the five of us on the board decided that we would look more toward the known. That is the talent that we were bringing up in each department and attempting to utilize that. So, this proposed amendment to the succession plan would simply add the option, not say that we will not go out, but to add the option of giving us the ability to say that we would like to limit the search to internal candidates or to search including internal and external candidates. The, the decision would still remain with the board as to how to go about it. But right now, we do not have the option under the way the succession plan is stated to simply look at internal candidates. And I think that that's an important option to add. It doesn't mean that we will only do that. But this is just an amendment to allow us to do that if we want. The second proposed amendment is to allow the executive committee, which would be doing, acting also as the search committee, to add one or more ex officio members of this commission who are not currently allowed on the executive committee and therefore not currently allowed to be on the search committee. So, this amendment would allow the executive committee to include one or more ex officio members in the search process. Of course, with attention paid to the Brown Act, that it wouldn't be more than half of the board. So, I would strongly recommend that we adopt these amendments. But this is an information only, I believe, right? So, Sarita, when are we looking at adopting these amendments? Because this says information only.
I'm, I'm not sure of the next scheduled meeting for the full board. Kim, do you know?
They'd, they'd go on consent. So, it'd be information here and the board on consent at the June, at the June board meeting.
The June board meeting.
Okay. So, Council, do you want to add anything to what I said before I asked commissioners what they think?
No, Madam Chair, I think you did an excellent job with the presentation concerning the proposal. Again, as you kind of summarized, it's going to, it would allow the board to have more flexibility in terms of the, the search committee and whether or not the commission, in the event this should ever come up, the commission desires to just have a solely internal candidate search or would like to have a search, a more broader search that would include internal and external candidates. So, it just more explicitly states that within the succession plan. And then, yes, allowing for ex officio members to participate on the search committee, being mindful, of course, of whatever Brown Act requirements will apply in that event.
Yeah, I would strongly suggest these two amendments for our consideration at the next meeting, especially given my current experience on the Board of Supervisors. You know, I can tell you, none of our departments at the moment is saying, gee, I hope they bring in some stranger from Minneapolis to run my department. They're just not feeling, you know, comfortable with someone who doesn't know what we've been through, what we're going through. And we brought up some very strong staff. My analysis, and it's personal in terms of First Five, is listening to presentations that have been made over, you know, these past months or years. There is some very, very strong staff internally as well. And I think we ought to have the option of considering them. And that's really what the amendment would provide. Not that we have to limit ourselves to that, but only that we could if we wished. So, I, anybody else want to opine or ask a question?
Commissioner Abdo?
I just, I was going to bring in the word flexible, but Sarita already said it. And so, I, I just, I think that both of these ideas are really important. And that we, you know, if we could have a motion right now, I would make it. But it's fine to wait till the next board meeting.
Okay, anybody else? Hearing none.
Commissioner Taylor has his hand up.
Go ahead.
If, if I could vote, if I could second that, I would second Julie's motion. So, you know, I think there's concurrent, at least I'm in concurrence with what is being presented as a change in the, the document so that we can have the flexibility to do one or both to do that. And I'm also in agreement with you, Sheila, that we have great staff here and things. So, anything we would do, it would be something to have both so that we can show how strong we really are and what we're doing. So, there would be a comparison. So, but anyway, I just want to say that I, I support this. And, and now we'll leave it to others to say what they think.
Great. Anybody else got their hand up?
No other hands up.
Thank you. Thank you, Ramallah. Thank you, Judy. Any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments on this item.
All right. The rest of our items today were information items written only. Please review them because they will come to the board in June, I think. And generally, these are the consent items. So, we assume that people will look at them and can, you know, and consider them. And so, those were written presentations only. Is there any general public comment requested?
There are no general public comments.
All right. Well, let me thank you all very, very much for the really good participation and intelligent discussion today. I hope that the, and the presentations of the staff, which I found very informative. I always learn something new. And I would, I don't think we need a motion for adjournment. I think my duty is simply to ask if anyone objects to our adjourning. Hearing none. And with thanks, this meeting is adjourned.